Hey. I'm calling Reese's. I don't know, but that was funny.
See what he do to me?
All right, y'all ready? Okay, uh, well, okay, there he is. Making sure we've still got a quorum. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Birmingham City Council. Today is February 20th. First item of business is consideration of the minutes of the December 19th, 2023 Committee of the Whole meeting.
I'd love for approval.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Doesn't sound like there's any objections, so those minutes are passed as written. Next item is Administrator Kidd's report.
Good afternoon, councilors. A very quick budget agenda report here, and you should have the packet before you. First of all, we have provided for you the department budget performance. Right now, we are at about 53% utilization, which is really good, but I would encourage you to start spending. Also, we have the budget due date for our budget to be turned back into the Budget Office. It's February the 29th. Our department hearing is March 21st at 2:30, and it will be by WebEx. Also, Campbell Partners, the law firm Campbell Partners is currently reviewing, the Law Department is currently reviewing the appointment letter, and right now, we're working with them to secure their 2024 tax license. At this point, there is no action taken on the Communication Media Plan, but we do anticipate that to come forward after your meeting on the 26th of February. The next order of business is the district budgets. We also have a few of our councilors who have above, a little above 50% or greater in their discretionary accounts, and we want you to get with us. Mr. McDaniels and Connie will be talking with you as to what and how you want to dispose of your dollars. For staff in office concern, approximately 298 bills have been filed in the Alabama Legislature, and there is a strong possibility that more will be filed. This is being brought to your attention because the council did express receiving a weekly update from the lobbying team. Garrett, and I hope I get this right, Crapius, his last day with District 5 office will be this Friday, February the 23rd. Garrett has accepted a full-time job with UAB, and we want to wish him well. Yeah. Also attached for your review are the two positions that we are seeking to fill in central staff, and unless otherwise directed, we would go forward to publish those, and they are an assistant PIO and a videographer. We also want to thank Chief Mitchell for creating a little bit more comfort for those such as India, for the cushions that are located behind the dais. So, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Do more. And speaking of comfort, we do realize that the chamber can get quite chilly, and we started on yesterday as we have been talking with Public Works to monitor the temperature, and we will continue to do so. Conference Room A, we also have, we are continuing our conversations about getting connectivity to the new table that we will be acquiring to run the new board that we have in the chamber, in the, in Conference Room A. Also, under departmental concerns, we know that we have secured March 18th, and that is confirmed with the mayor for the Budget Town Hall, but we are still waiting some other details around that Town Hall. There are, not to my knowledge, any constituents' complaints or concern. I do want you to note your travel and events as we know them right now, and they're located on the back of your agenda. The Masquerade Ball, Mayor's Masquerade Ball with UNCF is March 9th downtown at the Sheridan. National League of Cities, as most of you know, is March 11th through the 13th, and we continue to work with the administration's GA team and external partners to develop an itinerary for you. Pre-conference activity starts March 9th. The BBA's Governmental Affairs Committee will host Representative Nathaniel Ledbetter, Speaker of the House of Representatives, on March 18th at 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. And I don't have a location of that. At the BBA. And NCRC Conference Just Economy is April the 2nd through the 4th, and we have some time around the Alabama Legal Municipality Convention, which is May 15th through the 18th, and it is in Huntsville. And there is a note for the president relative to your responsibility of selecting three voting delegates. Lastly, Mr. McDaniels is interacting with the Alabama Legal Municipities to secure a potential meeting place for our next Economic Development Academy cohort meeting. Once that information is received, it will be shared with you. Each of you should have received an invitation to the AHSAA Regional Basketball Games. If not, please let us know. And that concludes my report, and if there's any questions or further directive, we're always open.
All right. Don't see any questions, or I just did want to let you, the council, know that, as you're aware, we've been working on preparing materials relative to that March 18th collaborative meeting slash Town Hall with the mayor's office, and one of the critical components of that initiative is developing a booklet, or handbook, that helps the public understand how the budgeting process works. I, Councilor Protem Alexander, and I have reviewed the draft version of that booklet as recently as yesterday. I requested one additional piece of information, but that be included in the booklet, but a draft version should be sent out to you all, probably by end of business tomorrow. Our timeline is to get a request to have that booklet printed into the print shop early next week, so no later than Tuesday. So, when you receive the draft version of the booklet tomorrow afternoon, please take some time to look at it and provide any feedback. You know, please recognize that we don't have space to accommodate wholesale, you know, rewriting, so if you don't like it, please reserve those types of comments. I think we're making a big step forward in doing this at all, so just recognize that, you know, let's not let perfection be the enemy of the good, but I think it's really good, in my opinion. And, but anyway, the, again, the objective is to get the, a final, final version to the print shop early next week, so again, when you receive it, latter part of tomorrow, please take a look at it and try and turn around any feedback that you may have to us so that we can accommodate, you know, any changes that you may want to see, and go ahead and be on schedule to, to get that turned around by the print shop. If we meet that timeline, we should have copies of it available to distribute the week before the 18th, and, you know, that can be part of the, how we advertise about the event, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. All right. Next up on our agenda is the presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, and good afternoon to the council, as well as good afternoon to the public. Thank you for allowing us to present to you this afternoon. As the President and Council, in compliance with the city's Mayor Council Act, the submitted financial statements for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2023 were subjected to an independent audit. The City of Birmingham Administration is pleased to present the findings of that audit to you today. A couple of things I want to do is, first start with some thank yous, and that is, two, one, our external partner. Make sure I stick with my notes. That is Shepherd Harris, our external partner, and has a certified public accountant to stay lead our audit process, so they're here, and they'll be presenting in a minute, but I wanted to publicly thank them for their hard work. In addition to that, although Kevin Moore cannot be here, he leads the Finance Department's team. That is a dedicated team who participated in this effort, with that, the biggest team member who played an outsized role. Is Aaron Saxton, I want to thank him as well, he's here as well, and will present to you as well, but all the other financial team, all the other finance team members, as well as the entire staff of the Finance Department, within the department, there's a division of general accounting, as well as the city's independent public accountants. That team collectively has allowed us to have this document in front of you. So at this time, have they received, Chad, have they received it? Everyone has it? Yes, of course, you received the electronic copy, but we wanted to give you this hard copy today, so I'll be very high level, and then I will pass it to our internal and external team members. I'll start with a simple, we had some pretty good revenues for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2023. We definitely manage our department expenses. Another short version, the economy is doing well, and our fund balance continues to grow. And so, at a high level, during the, during the year, the city experienced an operating surplus of approximately $33.4 million in our general fund. To break that down a little bit more, revenues were approximately $25.8 million over the amended annual budget. Business tax collections, including sales, use, business licensing fees, and occupational taxes were the main revenue drivers for that surplus, and actual expenditures for the general fund revenue were $48 million less. $48 million less than the amended annual budget, with under-budget savings in categories such as personnel, professional fees, fleet expenses, and a few others. So that is at a very high level. What I want to do is turn it over to the professional people who actually bill the numbers every day, and who are way smarter than I am. So with that said, who's first? This young lady's first.
Good afternoon, councilors.
Good afternoon.
And thank you, Mayor Wuffin, for allowing us to make this presentation this afternoon. I am Connie Harris, President of Shepherd Harrison Associates, and a proud resident of the City of Birmingham. This afternoon, I would give a highlights from the fiscal year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and I think you all have a copy of that. I will also give an assessment of the city's long-term fiscal health. The annual comprehensive financial report, and we call it the AFRA, is really in three sections. You have the introductory section, which gives general information on the government's structure, services, financial condition, and the environment. Then you have the financial section. This is where you will find the management discussion analysis, and the actual financial statements, your notes, and the required supplementary information. Then you have the third part, which is statistical section, which is found on page 153 through 205. This AFRA report was completed and published on December 28th, 2023. It contains almost 205 pages, and it all, it provides a wealth of financial information regarding the financial condition of the City of Birmingham. Like I said, I'll go over just the highlights of this report. First, the good news. As the external auditors, we gave the city an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. It simply states that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated. The un, the unmodified opinion results, and investors, creditors, rating agencies, and other interested parties, parties reading this AFRA, they can rely on the audited financial statements. Also, on this independent auditor's report, you'll find a section that says management responsibilities and the auditor's responsibility. The management responsibility is just, they prepare the financial statement. We, as auditors, we attest whether that information, information is fairly stated. This AFRA report, it complies with state law, general separate accounting principles, and also, this entire report, they received the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Also, good news, like Mayor Wuffin just said, your fund balance grew over the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Now, the not-so-good news. Even though the city position, the net position, which is your assets minus your liabilities, increased in your governmental activities, but the, the net position remains a negative balance. As of 2023, the net position for the governmental activities increased by $146.5 million and now stands almost at a negative $328.7 million. Like I said, that's a negative balance. That negative, negative balance, it includes that net position liability, the net pension liability, which nearly $702 million. The net position is at June 30th, 2023, is $328.7 million negative. But in, in that amount is your net pension liability, which is required. Yes.
So, the way that, sorry, excuse me, the 328.7 amount that would be arrived at by taking that total net pension liability of $702 million and deducting what the, the balance in the pension currently to arrive at that $328 million dollar number?
Yes. That net, the pension, you know, we get that from the actuary report. That's, and that has to be shown on the city's financial statement. Let me give you a little more about the net, the statement of net position. That's found on page, what page is that? Your net position, let me tell you how it's arranged. You have your assets for the city, that's what the city own, and your liabilities is what the city owe, and the difference between that, that's your net position. And in that net position is your, your pension, pension liability, and that's found on page 16 of your report. At June 30th, 2023, the total assets and deferred outflows, it was a little over $1.6 billion, but if you look a little farther, your liabilities was a little bit over $2 billion. So, the difference of that is your net, your net position, which, like I said, is the difference between the two, a negative $328 million. Okay?
Mr. President.
And just remember, the asset is what you own, the liability is what you, what you owe, and that's the net position. This is government, this is the governmental activities. The staff will come up and get, they'll go over some detail that you all see every month. Okay?
Chief Mitchell?
Because I see, I see the faces, and I just want to make sure I make the faces recognize what's, what's really going on. So what's, what's being said is that because we carry this negative balance due to our unfunded net pension obligation, that shows that we are not in line with what our revenues or our access versus our liabilities are saying. So if you recall that the, the state legislature passed a law that we shore up that negative net pension obligation for the R and R, which is the big board. So that is a steady thing that we're doing year on year and putting more money into that. Now, if you look at the F and P, which I know you're aware of, is, it has a, not a much larger net position of negative balance on the pension board, we're trying to find a way to indulge some more funding into that to make it more solvable. So, right now, we won't be at that point. That is a steadily increasing thing that we're trying to do to be more solvent in our pension, and that, that's what she noted about the actuary position. Once we can close that gap, which we had a, almost an infinitive thing of having to pay it off, we're now to like, I don't know, Mrs. Sax, what, we're down like to 20 years now, 15, yeah. So we're, we're closing that gap, and so you'll see every year that, that, that number will actually increase, but our overall will start kind of showing up, and we'll have more assets than liabilities.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to the, the statement of activities, your governmental activities, which is your revenues and your expenses. The total revenues for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, was a little over $686 million, while your expenses are a little over $548 million, which is changing that position was a little over $137 million. So that's, that's good. And like I said, at the end of the year, your net position end up, they started out with $466, a negative $466, but because the revenues was more than the expenses, your net position is a negative $328.664. Okay?
We're not as bad also as we used to be.
Right. And then I thought you may be one of, just what goes into this net position? So I put a sheet in there, what can increase your net position is your external grant funding of capital improvements, your funding capital improvements from your current cash flow, and your surplus of revenues that are unspent, used to, or used to pay down your liabilities. That's a positive effect to your net position. So what's the other side that can bring the net position down? The increases in your pensions and other similar, similar liabilities, and your non-cash expenses like depreciation. Okay? So where are we now, post-pandemic? Getting back to the, a realistic base, you can continue to control expenses, you can increase revenues, or some combination of the above. So what are the consequences of not taking any action? You might have budget shortfalls and reductions, or you might have reduction in services, or you might have a long-term fiscal impairment. So in summary, this afternoon, I say the city's AFRA for the fiscal year ending 2023 shows that the city is in full compliance with all required accounting procedures and standards. The city's current financial position is strong. The non-GAAP adjustments, which is your pension and your OPEB to, to the net position, help to better understand the factors affecting the city fiscal health. So I say, continue to develop and implement policies and practice, practices to bolster financial health that will help avoid financial impairments. And finally, I would like to thank the Finance Department for, for providing us with all needed information to complete this document. It was a big, a huge undertaking, so thank you, Finance Department. And that concludes my presentation.
Councilor Smitherson?
What's the, what's the state law number that required us to reduce that negative balance with the pension liability? Do you remember? I'll need it like right now.
You mean the bill we passed to, to mandate ourselves to fund the pension?
Yeah, remind me, yeah.
You want the bill number?
Yeah.
We'll get it.
Okay. And then, how much, because you've said it before, since you've been in office, and about five of us since 2017, how much money have we put towards reducing that pension amount?
Aaron can, Aaron will tell you that number.
Because I remember when I first got in office in like 19, and this is a positive, I remember you were telling us we needed to throw a lot of money at it. Who's in here?
Yes, ma'am. Aaron Saxton, I serve as Deputy Chief Financial Officer. A little more about that deficit, if you would turn in your annual comprehensive financial report to page 112 and 113. If you look in the 2023 column, up top, you'll find, under total pension liability ending, you see that balance of $1.67 billion? If you would compare that to the net position ending in that same column of $1.85 million, the $1.85 million are the assets of the pension fund. The $1.6 is the liability. That, that creates a deficit of the $587 million, and that's what makes our net position number negative. But if you would look at those two pages together, so if you would turn to page 117 and 118, this shows the history of the city's employer contributions towards the retirement and relief plan. When Mayor Wuffin took office, his first fiscal year would have been 2018. In that year, our contributions toward the retirement plan were $17 million, and you could see that number steadily increasing each year, a big jump in 2020. And you can see this past year, $39.8 million went into the retirement and relief plan, really in excess of the, the actuarially determined contributions that our actuary gave us. So from $17 million all the way up to $40 million. So substantial increases have been contributed towards the pension under this administration, under the council.
Mr. President, to Aaron's point, and to your colleague, Chairwoman of the Budget Finance Committee, Crystal Smitherson's question, this is a really big deal. Aaron, I don't remember the year where the law was changed with Aaron, I don't remember the year where the law was changed, um, with accounting and how public reporting is doing where your pension becomes an asset or a liability. But when that changed, we needed to hold ourselves internally accountable. And it didn't need to be politically motivated. I know prior to our administration, administrations just kicked this issue, they kicked this can down the road so far. We had nowhere to go but to pick the can up. But in doing so, we set ourselves up with that state law, which we're gonna get that number to you, hopefully before this meeting is over. But it's now required and mandated. So we can't politicize what we should put in. We can't negotiate what we should put in or take them somewhere else. We have to fund it. And that sets long-term, and in the immediate actually, a genuine investment in our employees and their future as it relates to their retirement.
Okay. Um, I, it really makes me very elated, honestly, very happy that we are investing in our employees, especially the pension, especially it's taken such a big financial responsibility that we were given. Um, so I'm really happy to hear that. I'm really happy to hear that the city is very financially healthy so far. So thank you, Mr. President.
HB five-ten, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I don't know, HB five-ten.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, at this time, we would like to continue the presentation with Mrs. Sax.
I think, believe Counsel Williams had a question.
Oh, I didn't know the presentation was still going on.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, just backing up a little bit, today we wanted to, um, do an overview of, uh, our fin- financials for twenty twenty-three. Um, financial highlights, there'll be a summary of revenues and expenses. Uh, we'll go over fund balances for general fund and the Birmingham fund. We'll touch, uh, a little specifically on the Birmingham fund and then take any questions that you have. Um, Mayor already really gave you an overview, um, thirty-three point four million dollars was, was a surplus in the general fund, um, primarily due to business tax collections, which were strong. Also, uh, our management of expenses, where expenses were forty-eight million dollars under budget. Um, our net position increased by a hundred and forty-seven million. And whenever you hear that term net position, that means that you're talking about all funds government-wide, including pensions, including healthcare, everything. Um, and that's, uh, that general fund surplus was a part of that. Also governmental funds, which we also present financials on a fund basis, um, in addition to the government-wide basis. Those fund balances totaled up to six hundred thirty-three million for the funds. Um, and I have Ms. Jelks, DeShana Jelks, who's our comptroller. She's gonna come up and talk about revenues, expenses, and briefly about fund balances.
Good afternoon. So I'll briefly talk about, um, a summary of our revenues and give you some visuals of them and how they performed so far. So how has the revenue collection changed over the years? So in twenty twenty-one, our total revenues was about four hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. That was in twenty-one. And then in twenty-two, it increased to five hundred and twenty-two million. And then in twenty-three, we increased to about five hundred and forty-four million. So over that time, revenue increased, um, from twenty-one to twenty-two, it increased about eight point three percent. And then from twenty-two to twenty-three, it increased about four point two percent. And so here is just a pie chart showing you what is the makeup of our revenue. And as you can see, eighty-one percent of our revenue is business taxes. And that was about four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. So I break out business taxes for you, so you can see what made up that four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. So thirty-three percent of our business taxes is from sales tax. That's about a hundred and forty-five million. And then next, we have occupational tax at a hundred and eighteen million. Our business tax is at ninety-two million, and then you have use tax, that's about seventy-one million. So those four alone, sales, occupational, use tax, and business license, makes up ninety-seven percent of our business taxes. And that totals about four hundred and twenty-seven million. So here I am showing you a three-year trend of those, the three largest revenue sources. So it's sales tax is in the blue, and then there's occupational tax, orange, and business tax is in the gray. So from twenty-one to twenty-two, our sales tax was up eleven percent. And then from twenty-two to twenty-three, it was up two percent. Our occupational tax from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and twenty-two to twenty-three, both increased by seven percent each of those years. And then our business licenses from twenty-one to twenty-two, it increased eleven percent. And then in twenty-three, it went up another seven percent. Now I'll go over our expenses. Um, so over those, these three years, our expenses have, from twenty-one, went from about three hundred and ninety-six million. And that's a, um, in twenty-two, it went up four hundred and twenty-six million. So that's a seven percent increase from twenty-one to twenty-two. And then from twenty-two to twenty-three, our expenses went up by eleven percent. And if you look at that chart, that bar graph, you will see our largest expenses, and each of those are personnel services. And then the next one is our contributions to boards and agencies. So contributions to boards and agencies from, um, twenty-one to twenty-two went up nineteen point seven percent. And then from twenty-two to twenty-three, it increased twenty-nine point six percent. And so this is a pie chart just showing you where the bulk of our expenses are paid. And of course, that's personnel services. And then the next, at seven percent, are our contributions to boards and agencies. And so our total expenses in our general fund was about four hundred and seventy-six million, five hundred and seventeen. Up next is our fund balance. I believe, um, several have talked about this already, so I'm just gonna talk about our general fund balance and so you'll know where we are with that. Once again, we received a, um, surplus of thirty-three point five million. And that was due to, we anticipated some, some declines in revenue due to the pandemic still, but our revenue collec- collections increased and they main, remain consistent, and our tax revenues went up as well. Business tax and some of our bank excise tax went, increased as well. So revenues were approximately twenty-six point million dollars over our original budget. And then we'll talk about this Birmingham fund balance. So we currently have one hundred million, seven fourteen in our Birmingham fund balance. And it experienced an increase, um, of seven percent from twenty-two to twenty-three. We had a decrease from twenty-one to twenty-two of thirteen percent, but it increased this year by seven percent. And mainly investment income contributed to the increase, and then the fact that we only spent seven point one million in expenses. So, um, deputy chief Saxton will give you more details on this Birmingham fund.
All right. As far as the Birmingham fund, you know that we have, uh, regular appropriations that are made every year of five percent. Those are done, um, as part of our budget cycle, where you guys approve the transfer of that five percent into the general fund every year. Um, so I just wanted to go over some of those guidelines for regular appropriations and extraordinary appropriations. So regular appropriations, um, cannot exceed that five percent. And the five percent is the average market value for a five-year period. But you can also have extraordinary appropriations of those, uh, Birmingham funds in excess of that five percent if the following conditions are satisfied. Uh, at least five members of the city council have to adopt the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance would have to specify a specific amount of money for a specific purpose. The ordinance would include findings that shows that the expenditure would be in the best entrance of the city and its residents. Um, it would have to be an extraordinary circumstance. And, uh, the ordinance would also have to be approved by the mayor. As of June thirtieth, that, um, Birmingham fund balance was a hundred four million dollars. Um, I know you probably wanna know what it is today. As of, uh, January thirtieth, it was a hundred and fifteen million. It's grown to one, a hundred and fifteen million. And we also had some return numbers where the investment managers are largely meeting their benchmarks. But, uh, that really concludes our presentation, and we're open for any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. All right. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, um, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor and, and finance department for this information. Um, it's really, it's really, um, informative. I was just curious, cause I know as we move into the budget season, we have to, you know, look at these historical revenue numbers to figure out, to try to project what our revenue is gonna be next year to come up with the budget. So is there a place in here where we actually see how revenue came in compared to what we projected?
Yes, ma'am. On page, uh, I wanted to say twenty-one, no. It's. Thank you, Mayor.
Which one is it?
Page twenty-three.
Okay.
There is a report in here that compares, uh, your budget amounts to your actuals on revenues and expenses.
So the, uh, original or the final would, that would be our projection? And the actual would be what came in?
Right. This is for twenty twenty-three. You have the original budget that was passed, and then, you know, amendments are made throughout the year, uh, to come up with the finalized budget number, and those are compared to the actuals. You have your variance column to the far right.
So would that mean that we were conservative in our budgeting compared to the rev, the income that actually came in that year?
Every year.
Yes, ma'am, every year.
Okay.
We have to be.
Basically, if I remember from my conversation with, um, the former director of finance, Lester Smith, yeah, he pretty much explained that, you know, the, um, those projections are required to be very conservative.
Yeah, well, and I'll just tell you, from the administration's standpoint, which includes Lester then and now Kevin and Aaron and the entire team, it's simple for us. We, there's only, there, there are only so many fixed things. So, um, taxes can be regressive. In the case of sales taxes, which is our driver, how motivated are the nine of you, plus the remaining almost two hundred thousand citizens willing to actually spend money to produce taxes for us? I'm using that as an example, and it may sound silly, um, but when you, when it's things like that, or it's depended on, um, I know something that even Ms. Abbott, uh, who's been here for a while, looks at the things we spend money on sports and entertainment, but you see that even that small revenue forms four million dollars that comes from our ability to bring people to our city in return they stay here in our, in our hotels. And they also spend money, which increases sales taxes. And then we try to attract small business, retain small business, make small business, um, processes more efficient and engage in the city, and creating economic opportunities, because we're also depending on business license as well as other forms of taxes. So yes, we are intentionally conservative, Mr. President and Ms. Clark, to your question. And we don't see that necessarily changing. Um, we look at the whims around us, what's going on in the nation, and even what's going on with the state revenues. Um, you see their coffers if you paying attention to their budget process. So we do feel blessed, uh, but we have an amazing finance team that makes us make very wise, conservative decisions um, in our projections and how we budget and our expenses as it relates to once the budget is passed.
I have a question, so. Kinda concerned that, you know, we're, um, you know, based on the fact that we had forty-eight million in surpluses in our expenditures, I'm concerned that, you know, we're, we're over-budgeting, uh, for, you know, that's forty-eight million that we accounted for in the budget that didn't get spent. So it looks like, you know, a lot of that is coming from police department, twelve million dollars, public works department, almost seven million dollars, parks and recreation, three million dollars, equipment management, six point five million dollars, and general services, almost seventeen million dollars. You know, that's forty-eight million dollars that, uh, we'll now have to, you know, figure out how to, um, what to do with. But, uh, I, I'm, you know, concerned that we're putting in such big cushions in, in our budgeting. Um, I, I think, you know, I would, I would think that we would want to, uh, approach the next budget cycle to try and reduce that number. Is that fair to say?
Mr. President, I, I don't know if I would use the word fair. I think we should talk out, I think we should talk out your concern. Um, um, try to be candid as possible. I think if you look at the snapshot graph that, uh, on page eleven, that Aaron Saxton provided, you see person, personnel services is under the category of all three years, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And yes, you see an increase in personnel services, but it's, it's on par also with the average embedded in the entire budget. Then you dig in that, we're supporting our existing employees every, our existing employees every year with the cost of living adjustment. But then when you dig into that, the positions for each department that we give, whether it's fill or not fill, includes that cost of living adjustment as well. So that cost of living adjustment, even for that unfilled position, is going to follow the number you see, which is part of the increase. Now, forgive me for my delay in speaking, but if you look in your book on twenty-three, remember this is also the fiscal year ended last year. So we're hoping that number decreases. In addition to that, I think when you saw that big, big number, not necessarily the forty-three, but years prior, let's say twenty-one, twenty-two, um, I think that concern was more legitimate on the personnel piece then. But you see in a department like FIRE, they are filling their positions. Uh, Birmingham Police Department, um, is no different than any other, I would say, mid-sized city right now. right now, or large city right now, or in the wake of George Floyd's death, as well as the height of retirement due to the coronavirus. Mid-sized and large cities' ability to fill positions in the police departments at the rate of the retirement, along with the distrust that unfortunate untimely homicide created in George Floyd led to a lot of people and the next generation not necessarily wanting to be police officers and police departments and city governments have to get creative in how we pull in people who may no longer desire to be officers. But this is, our city's no different than what's nationally happening. I think you mentioned a few other departments, which included General Services. Part of our conversations with the Personnel Board is to say, hey, this issue exists. It's taking too long to fill these positions in a twelve-month period. We need to pull candidates faster. Help us co expedite the process so we can fill these positions before the fiscal year ends.
Yeah, so understood. Can you speak to some of the inverse situation? So you mentioned, you know, the, the Fire Department. They actually came in at four point two million over what was originally budgeted, and also Human Resources, three point four million over.
Well, I think, Aaron, you can tell me if I'm wrong, attrition is calculated every year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who's eligible for retirement and possible projected retirees based on number of vacant positions and needing to be filled. And I think you see a situation in the Fire Department. The intangible that's happening is that of, of all public services in the entire nation, people trust the Fire Department the most. People want to be firefighters, and there's never a problem to fill those positions. And so those classes are big, and at the same time, I guess the calculated attrition didn't necessarily match, so you just have a lot of employees in the Fire Department, which is not a bad thing, based on our cause of services.
Yeah, no, no complaints. What about, uh, Human Resources?
I will be making up, I will be making up an answer. I don't know. Aaron, you have any thoughts? I don't have any thoughts on HR, I'm just president.
Let me just mention, one of the things that the council is interested, piece of information that we're interested in seeing is a position control report for the city to help us understand, you know, where, where each of our departments stand in terms of positions budgeted versus the number that are actually what I call the positions that actually have a heartbeat. So, you know, we know some of those departments, some, obviously, some of those departments have budgeted positions that don't have a heartbeat. So I think a position control report would be helpful to us to understand kind of where, you know, those, those vacancies are. And, you know, additionally, you know, if it's not already included, understanding, you know, the, those positions, how long they've been vacant.
I want to make sure we honor the council's request. I know I don't see any H R team members in this room. I doubt Finance Department uses the term position control. You do? You want to explain? Can you, you have any response to him at, at top of mind without any documents shared here?
Well, what I was going to say is, if you had any specific questions about line items, either on page twenty-three, if you could just email those to us, and we'll drill down and do the legwork and report back to you.
Let me find email, to, email to our office or chance or Ms. Camilla.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say generally, you know, that it's, I understand that this is a fiscal year twenty-three, and we're in fiscal year twenty-four, but we're about to move into the budgeting process for fiscal year twenty-five. I, I doubt that there's going to be a big variance between fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, because we largely didn't do, you know, anything significantly different that would impact, you know, that number, the, the forty-eight million dollar surplus in expenditures. So I'm anticipating that fiscal year twenty-four, well, it will likely be in the same ballpark I would expect. So what I'm saying is that moving forward into fiscal year twenty-five, you know, I would, I would rather that, that us try to eliminate.
Not needed positions.
Right.
Right, so.
I don't want to end up with another fiscal year where we, we spent a heck of a lot less than we anticipated, and we knew that that was likely going to be the outcome, because there's a bunch of positions that are not likely to be filled.
You know, that is very fair. I don't think the administration is far off in that thinking. You know, Aaron, Aaron is here and other team members, Ms. Diana's here and other team members, Comp Control, et cetera, and other team members that I didn't name by name are here from Finance, but, you know, I consider the process we go through every year of holding departments accountable in the, in the budget process where they have requests, and then we drill down hard on, you know, making sure those requests are in line with the ability to produce. And the bulk of their requests is always going to come in the form of personnel. So from a global standpoint, I think we all know, set aside general service, general services. Over here in public safety, you're going to have a heavy dose of employees in three departments, Police, Fire, and Public Works. And I remember this council and the mayor's office, those tough decisions we had to make during the coronavirus, when the budget passed six-three, the only time it ever happened. But what you saw was do, cut an extreme amount of down to the bone necessary in lieu of what we thought of projected revenues being lower, right? Turns out the revenue end, it didn't end up that way. But coming back out of that, we got significant pushback from departments, because there was an opportunity to, if you will, we, we peel back, we pop the hood, we look under, justify getting these positions back. And I know we did that in General Services, but we also did that in Police, we did that in Fire, and we did it in Public Works. And what I can say, if I can use Chief Moon, for example, he made that request every year, getting those positions back, made them justified. He was able to justify, and today he can fill them. Again, I'm just using him for an example. And so cutting the, cutting the fat out of these individual departments, we were actually able to do during that coronavirus budget. I think what's happening now is in Police and in Public Works, two of the, two of the three largest departments, we have to continue to be aggressive in competitive wages, which we feel we are now, by the way. So again, some of that increase in the personnel costs is that you all have approved merit, you've improved, you've approved COLs. Healthcare cost goes up, so that's embedded in it. Pension cost goes up, so that's embedded in it as well. So on the personnel costs, you're right, the positions may not, you're not seeing an increase in positions. You want to know if the unfilled positions are, what's the justification of the unfilled positions, and within the unfilled positions are, do some need to not exist? That's what I hear.
Right. I mean, my understanding is that, that the majority of that forty-eight million surplus is going to be, that's going to be the thing that contributed to that, is, is unfilled positions.
So I understand it to be actually a thirty-three million dollar surplus.
Yeah.
Can you break down, if you look on the Roman numeral four of the book, last paragraph under twenty-two, twenty-three, operating results, can you break down this thirty-three point four, and then this forty-eight?
Where are you at, Mayor?
I'm in the book. I think this is introduction, but it's four.
The thirty-three point four was the surplus number. We tried to tie into it by telling you, you know, how revenues compared to budget, how expenses compared to budget. But in reality, we're only highlighting certain, certain items. If you look at line by line throughout our whole budget, that's where you're going to come back to the thirty-three point four. I understand your concern as far as the overall surplus. You don't want us to generate an artificial surplus every year because of vacant positions. Years past.
Precisely.
Yeah, years past. I think maybe there was a practice where departments would have all these vacant positions that were budgeted, they knew they weren't going to fill them, and during the year, they would try to take the money they had left over in positions and transfer them to other line items that they could use, you know, kind of like a little, little cushy fund that they could go back to, but, you know.
Speaking the language.
We're, we're hip to those processes. Our budget team is hip to it, just like the mayor said. We're peeling back the layers and making the departments justify the positions that they asked for. In certain circumstances, they may come in and say, we need, you know, fifty positions budgeted for a full year, but we know that they're not going to be able to hire all those positions, so the budget team may only budget for half those positions for the fiscal year. Or they may budget a certain number of positions for six months or three months, just based on what we think the actual results will be. But at the same time, we don't want to budget nothing, knowing that they need certain positions. But we do understand your concern.
Right. So that's part of the reason why I'm asking for the position control report, and, and additionally, within that position control report, you know, what is the duration of time that, you know, any individual position has remained open?
So that duration is undetermined, only because that's a moving target, sir. I want to be very honest with you. That can change literally on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, because we never stop hiring with, in combination with the process across the board. So that's a, that's a, that's a legitimate fluctuation.
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, it, it would be, having been here now, you know, six years and gone through, you know, many of these cycles, it would seem to me that, you know, certain departments have had budgeted positions that year after year, they're, we're pretty much guaranteed that they are going to remain vacant. And, you know, I think part of it is exactly as you described, Mr. Saxon, that, you know, it, it, there was a cushion built in, and, you know, I won't speak to the intent or anything, but, you know, it was understood going into it that there was, it was very unlikely that all of those positions would be filled within the, the timeframe of that budgeted fiscal year.
Mr. President, we want to honor your request, you and your colleagues, as it relates to the, the position control. Oh, Aaron was speaking to past tense. He was not speaking to what we, as an administration, does.
Right.
All you have to do is follow the trend. And so I think before we came into office, I think total budget was over four thousand employees.
Correct.
I think it's down to what now, three thousand something? I don't even think it's more than thirty-six or thirty-five hundred. So I don't have that number off the top of my head, but what I do know is that it's not, if you just follow the trend over the years, we've gone from a budgeting for over four thousand, for over four thousand plus employees to now over three thousand.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, to your point about, about, you know, some of the staffing challenges and, you know, departments having to justify these positions that get approved, what can we do differently? Because he mentioned, you know, fiscal year twenty-four likely being like fiscal year twenty-three, because maybe we haven't instituted anything radically different to get positions filled. I know we looked at some legislative changes regarding the Personnel Board, but, but notwithstanding that, I mean, because, as you mentioned, the Fire Department somehow worked within the system we have to become fully staffed. So is there a strategy to model that, whatever they did somehow, for other departments to work within the confines and constraints of what we have to? I mean, it, it seems like they demonstrated a model that maybe we need to study and figure out how to apply to other departments, because I feel like we have money, but we don't have workers to do the work, and so the service level is going down.
So, you know, again, kudos to the Fire Department. They, they have an abundance of the desire for people want to be firefighters, and our ability to have competitive wages in the form of recruitment and retention bonuses. For the record, the Police Department has the same recruiting and retention bonuses as well. But what's going on in the nation as far as the desire of Generation Y and the desire of Generation Z, for those who want to go in public service, whether it's a nurse, or a teacher, or a firefighter, or a police officer, we know there is a decreased trend in the following, police officers, teachers, nurses. We know it's a, it's either steady or increase in firefighters. But as it relates to competitive wages and what the Fire Department is offering, other departments are offering as well. As General Services may be different, what you do for an accountant, or engineer, or architect, or somebody in planning, I mean, those wages are what they are, and they're pretty competitive in isolation, so you don't need necessarily a bonus to attract. You just need a process that works, an onboarding process that's more efficient in conjunction with our existing model, which is the Personnel Board. But the two departments where you see a higher frequency of the ability to not fill the positions are in the other two public safety departments, which are Police and Public Works. And just, and it's a matter of us continuing to be aggressive in my left hand, offering those retention and recruitment bonuses, and being aggressive with our wages. But on the other hand, how do we communicate with Generation Y, Generation Z, who would be the new employees we will be onboarding into these public service positions? And how do you go out and create a lane or path for people who may not choose this form of public service?
Yeah, I, I do feel like there's more we could do to sort of glamorize public service careers, maybe look in some other places, some unlikely, I guess, fish in some other ponds for police officers, maybe schools of social work instead of wherever we usually fish, I don't know. But, I mean, are there some strategies? Is somebody figuring it out? Because I know the police, the police, you know, that might be a challenge, but some, you know, how are we promoting public service careers and, you know, trying to get people to think about them? And, you know, trying to get people to think about them, um.
Right, yeah, I'd just say, you know, because like the public works department was one of those that had. You know, the decreased expenditures of, of almost seven million dollars. Um. You know, and that definitely has a profound impact on our communities, you know, that's. Seven million dollars that we had planned for that wasn't delivered to our communities.
Yeah, well, so that's, I'm gonna imagine, I know the majority of it was personnel, which. If I'm looking at Ms. Abbott, she's gonna say we need those employees to deliver services, and the other eight of you all would say the exact same thing, to be clear. So I'm not, I'm not picking on you at all, Ms. Abbott, just using you as an example. The point I'm making is if you look at. Um, our HR policies, our HR procedures, along with once they become employees. Along with, um. Along with being on probation for a year, I think all ten of us would agree there are certain challenges that present, um, that employee group. Um, that they may or may not be able to clear that hurdle during that probationary period. Um, I see Ms. Tate shaking her head, so she knows what I'm trying to articulate. I think you all do too, uh, but every department is different, I want to be very clear on that, right? Um. Who qualifies, pay. Who's attracted to those departments? Um, what's required in background, what's required during their probationary period? Uh, that may be actually on par for all departments. But the onboarding is different for each department and who we're trying to attract. But Ms., Ms. Clark, your, I mean, Counselor Clark, and to your other colleagues. Uh, trust us, this is something we think about every day, this is something, um, that. Um, Chief Sparks and Chief Fields, as well as. Um, Chief Mitchell, as well as Chief Smalley, that we, we share with department heads. Um. Get creative. What's the plan? How are we communicating? What are we doing to attract Generation Y and Generation Z? Because tha- that's who we're trying to attract. Majority of our employees are somewhere, uh, between, um, boomers and X. Am I missing a generation? Most of them are boomers and X, and then you're gonna have a lot of, um, a lot of your younger employees in parking wreck and police. And probably the youngest group, believe it or not, is fire, firefighters in public works.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the challenge and don't want to sound as if I'm chiding, I'm more like thinking, how can we help? You know, in our, in our community engagement. Um, you know, so that it can be a little more coordinated. And then I just wanted to ask you about, uh, returning citizens. Do we have any jobs, like ex-offenders, or, okay? Are there any positions that would be open or that they could qualify for?
Absolutely. I mean. You know, I, I can't say, that's one thing, several departments along with the Jefferson County Personnel Board gets raped. I can take you to not one, but a few departments. Um, where second chances, um, are working. Well-productive citizens who work hard, bust their butts, committed to the city, show up to work on time, take care of their families. It works. Um, I, that's one of the things I can definitely brag about for the city of Birmingham as an employer.
Counselor Abbott, you have a question?
I did. Um, so we changed from the CAFER to the ACFER?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean.
Uh, they actually found out that CAFER was a derogatory racist term that's used in South Africa. And so they had to change the acronym.
Well, I wondered after twenty-two years of hearing it one way to change, I thought maybe it was like the Department of Transportation. Um, on page one seventeen, one eighteen, there's a, this is in the, um, schedule of employers' contributions. And we have the health department.
Which page, I'm sorry?
One seventeen, one eighteen, but one seventeen is where it's listed, the health department, and I was wondering, is that in our book as a comparison?
Oh, no, ma'am, uh, there are, um, a few employees from the health department that are a part of the city's retirement and relief plan. And I'm not sure how far that history goes back, but, uh, there's not very many participants from the health department.
Yeah, because there were no actuarially determined contributions at all.
Well, Ms. Abbott, don't mean to throw you a curveball, but, um, there are two other groups that are in our, our pension. The State Airport Authority and the Parking Authority as well.
But at least that makes sense. The health department didn't make nearly as much sense as those two did, in my mind, so.
I agree, well. Definitely probably before your twenty-two years of service, um, that didn't happen on during our time together, so.
Right.
Don't, don't know.
Yeah, I was just curious. So the other thing is, I was interested in, no, and I realize we're, you know, we're looking back, but we've got to look forward now. And healthcare and lawsuit liabilities are sort of floating around out there. Do we have a feel for what is coming, what could be coming to get us, or are we pretty?
Ms., Ms. Abbott, you. Oh, man. So that may be one of the most important questions, all the questions have been great, but I literally just left a meeting at one o'clock with the legal team leadership. So let, let me talk about healthcare first, and simple is easy. Healthcare costs will continue to go up. We all know that, that's been a trend, it's consistent. Um, America's population will continue to age, Alabama's population will continue to age, city of Birmingham population will continue to age. And our employees popu-, our employee population will continue to age. Um, and so, you know, we got, on the pension side, we got different things. Um. For when that employee came in, but health-wise, it's pretty the same. So what we try to do as, on the employer's side, is absorb a lot of that cost, so it does not pass to the employee. However, that can only go so far and at a certain point. So after so many years, we gotta go back to that employee and say, well, your cost is going to increase too. Because if, if the employer absorbs it all. We can't give a COLA. We can't give a merit. Uh, we can't do the necessary things we want in the supplemental. Um, and so. HR leaves a lot of that effort in anticipating what the healthcare costs are, negotiations and the bargaining and the back and forth, and talking to the, um, our providers. That's, that conversation is not gonna change though. So. That expectation is kind of baked in, and we try to manage that as best we can. I want you all to know I am very, very concerned about the other thing you raised, which is litigation. Um, courts have changed the way immunity is covered. That leaves cities very exposed. Uh, I don't think people are hearing the conversation, so I want to break it down very simply. We talk about the ability to hire police officers post the murder of George Floyd and the decrease in trust. And the ripple that it, that it sent across America and in local communities and everyday people not trusting the police. Well, everyday people not trusting the police. Equals less people having interest in wanting to be police officers. But there is another side of that as well. If and when, um, an employee. Issue involves a citizen and it makes its way to court in front of a jury. You have to assume the worst. Because that same mistrust on the. Police side of, of people don't even want to be, you have to consider what an everyday juror or citizen would see in a case before them. And so we do have to talk about increasing costs for potential litigation. That also requires us to be smart. For our leadership and police department to embed in our beat officers and patrol and other units. What are our regs, rules, and policies and follow them to the letter. It does mean how they operate their vehicles and our policies around chase, and I can go on and on, what we should be doing, so we're not in violation of anything. But if and when something occurs. Our, our lawyers are gonna make one or two decisions. We were wrong, settle the case. We don't know what that cost could be. Or we believe we're right, defend ourselves, and you still can't predict what a jury does. And that cost can increase more. I hope I've explained it in a way where, as simple as I can put it. We should be definitely talking about. Cost increasing, and, and the truth is. We may say this is what we predict for this fiscal year, then we may have to come back to the council and say. Uh, we blacked that in the first seven months of the year, it's five months left in the fiscal year, sorry, but. A jury ruled this not in our favor. This is what we need to finish out the fiscal year. That's happened, I think, at least once, but maybe twice, and I wouldn't be surprised if it hasn't happened again. So you opened it up, but I literally just had this conversation at between one and one forty.
I was eavesdropping. Um, but the other question was the, I know that back a number of years ago, nobody may remember this, the, the railroads. Thought that they were due money back from the city of Birmingham.
Right.
Did that ever go away or get resolved, or is it still lurking?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I just wanted to tell you, 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 um, can turn to page sixty-three of your ACFER. And this is a section that will be of particular interest to you. Be, because it's, uh, our risk management. And this tells you, um, what the city has already booked as a liability. And it goes into some detail about, uh, workers' compensation claims. It goes into our, uh, healthcare claims and our liability that we booked, uh, this year, past years. It also goes into those particular cases that you mentioned, starting on page sixty-five, are all those railroad cases. And where we stand with those. And, uh, finally, the claims liability as a overall is on this chart on page sixty-six. So you've got all the detail there that you need.
So I've got more than what I needed.
Yes, ma'am.
And the last, and the last question, that's for when I can't sleep. Um, repairs and maintenance on this, this pie chart. Repairs and maintenance for the city are like one percent?
What page, uh, Ms. Abbott?
It, well, it's twelve, it's page twelve of the.
I see it.
Yeah. The one with the nice picture on the front. Audit presentation for year end June thirty of twenty-twenty-three, so on page twelve. There's poor little repairs and maintenance at one percent, and my bet is it's below one percent, and we just round it up. So I would, I would like for us to fix that for future ACFERS. You know, because. I'm sorry, that, that gets us into trouble too, when we don't take care of what we own and people get injured like sidewalks. Have y'all walked on any set, city sidewalks lately that aren't downtown? I think we have lot, real, real liability, not just play liability, but real liability, so I would like to see that one percent go up.
Yeah, Counsel, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Because I just wanted to make sure, just for clarification, because our chart of accounts have a lot of different GL accounts that flow up to repairs and maintenance, we hear you. And I think we have done that in the past for the deferred maintenance part of it. I just wanted to make sure for clarification, some of the, the things on there, why it shows a negative balance is because it may be something like fuel may be down this year, or diesel may be down this year. Just want, wanted to clarify that, but we hear you.
Okay, well, I just saw that little one percent, and it seemed awfully little. That's all, thank you, Mr. President.
Um, so. Along the lines of risk management, um. Glad to see that addressed in the. ACFRA. Um, but I, I think it would be useful for us, um, to have a, even just a, in the form of a spreadsheet from OCA. Um, pending, uh, litigation, uh, against the city, so that we have, you know, some visi- visibility on. What's out there, um.
I think, I think, literally based on our conversation. Uh, just look forward to engaging you and your colleagues, um, on some one-on-one time and sitting down with you actually. To go over a lot of things that would be of interest to you.
Sure, it's a, a long list, how much time do we need to allocate for that conversation?
Oh, Mr. President, she'll call you.
Okay. Uh, but, but, yeah, I mean. It's, in addition to all of these, um, railroad cases, you know, I'm aware of, uh. Some other things, but I, I, I would like to get a snapshot of, you know, what's out there and what we need to be anticipating. Other questions, Counsel Williams?
My, well, first of all, thank you, um, for everybody involved in the work. Thank y'all all collectively. Um, one thing that needs to be fixed, uh, is the organizational chart. The council appoints the municipal court, and the council does not appoint the airport authority, the mayor appoints the airport authority, so that needs to be fixed. Um, on the organizational chart. I know we don't want to get the Mayor Council Act confused, and then us to exhibit back to this.
What page, sir?
This is page seven of the preface. So I just wanted to make sure. And then for the, the group that's the accounting firm, um, how many years have you guys? Um. It, it, this is your, your, this, this will be the third year, or, or this upcoming fiscal year will be the third?
Twenty-three.
So this is the third year.
Current presentation is third year.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it.
Other questions? Are we done with this item?
Well, we need to go read it.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that.
Mr. President, I, I do have something important. I want to encourage you and your colleagues, if you have any questions. Uh, please send them directly to Chaz Mitchell and Camila Gray-Lewis. Please. Pretty please.
Okay.
Well, you could, but that wouldn't be helpful to you. Hey, I, I don't want other team members to ignore you. Or not respond.
All right, do we have any newer old business we need to discuss? Not? All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that sounds unanimous.